Members, let's resume. This session is about security. I would like to welcome the Secretary for Security and his team to our meeting. I'll give the floor to the Secretary for brief opening remarks. For members who wish to ask questions, please press the button Request to Speak. Secretary, please. Secretary, the Secretary, please. Members, order please. It's time for the Secretary to speak.
Thank you, Chair. In the draft estimates for the new financial year, allocation for the policy areas under the Security Bureau's responsibility will be fifty-seven point five billion dollars, accounting for seven point nine percent of the total government expenditure. Law and Order. The operational priorities of the Hong Kong Police Force for twenty twenty twenty-one are to combat violent crimes, trials syndicated and organized crimes, dangerous drugs and quick cash crimes to promote cybersecurity and combat technology crimes and to ensure public safety and step up counter-terrorism work. In view of the occurrence of over one thousand four hundred public order events since last June, where many of which turned into illegal acts of serious violence, the Hong Kong Police Force will enhance its readiness, combat all illegal acts of violence and safeguard public peace. We are also very concerned that violent extremists were involved in a number of bomb cases in recent months. Their behavior was very close to terrorist attacks commonly seen overseas. The government will be fully prepared and will enhance public awareness of counter-terrorism and an emerging homegrown terrorism threat, which severely endangers the personal safety of the general public. Control points in response to the development of the COVID nineteen epidemic, the government had since in January twenty twenty implemented a series of measures to reduce passenger flow between Hong Kong and overseas. At this point, passenger clearance is only available at the airport and two land-based control points, the Lishan Bay and Hong Kong Juhang Macau Bridge. And the operating hours of passenger clearance at the two land-based control points had also been shortened to ten hours. At the airport, we've restricted the entry of non-Hong Kong residents coming from overseas countries and regions. After implementing a series of immigration restrictions and compulsory quarantine measures, the total number of arrivals on seventh April was nine hundred ninety-two, one thousand five hundred seventy-six on the eighth of April, representing a decrease of ninety-nine point five percent in comparison with the figure of around two hundred thirty-six thousand prior to the implementation of the measures. Concerning the construction progress of the Hangyan Hua Boundary Control Point, its building works have been largely completed in twenty nineteen and a control point is ready for commissioning. The government will continue to release, will to continue to liaise with the meaning authorities on arrangement for commissioning the new control point. Non-refundment claims. Since the commencement of the Comprehensive Review of the Strategy of Handling Non-Refundment Claims in twenty sixteen, various measures have yielded considerable results. The number of non-ethnic Chinese illegal immigrants has dropped by over eighty percent. Number of new claims has also dropped by over eighty percent. Immigration Department has basically completed the screening of the backlog claims. The number of appeal cases pending the torture claims appeal boss handling has also dropped significantly to below three thousand, which is expected to be completed in first half of next year as soon as. The Immigration Department will also expedite to remove all of the unsubstantiated claimants in Hong Kong, from Hong Kong. The government consulted the Electoral Panel on Security on the proposed amendments to the Immigration Ordinance in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and exchanged views with one of the stakeholders, including the two legal professional bodies. Meanwhile, we also commenced drafting the Amendment Bill. Taking into account the situation, precious operation, the government will review the timetable for taking forward the relevant work. Fire Safety Improvement Works of Subsidy Scheme. The government, in partnership with the Urban Renewal Authority, U R A, implemented a two billion dollar fire safety improvement works subsidy scheme in twenty eighteen to facilitate owners of old composite buildings to carry out improvement works for compliance with the enhanced fire safety requirements under Fire Safety Buildings Ordinance. The U R A received over two thousand four hundred applications, which met the basic requirements. Since the response from the public was positive, we have proposed to allocate an additional funding of three point five billion dollars, increasing the total subsidy funding from two billion dollars to five point five billion dollars, so as to benefit more eligible owners of the old composite buildings. The number of reported drug abuses has continued to decrease. The total number of reported drug abuses decreased by seventeen percent in twenty nineteen compared with that in the previous year and by around forty percent compared with five years ago. This represents the achievements made as a result of the government and various sectors of the community fighting drugs together under the existing policy. However, the median history of drug abuse has increased from four point six years in twenty seventeen to five point five years in twenty six nineteen. In other words, seeking help for the first time after taking drugs for five point five years. As such, the problem of hidden drug abuse requires our attention. In addition, the number of cannabis abuses has also increased. We'll continue to take strong enforcement action and carry out publicity and education and monitor the legalization of cannabis in overseas jurisdictions. Custody and Rehabilitation. The Correctional Services Department will continue to proactively develop smart prison through application of innovation technology and modernizing correctional facilities so as to enhance the efficiency of penal management, level of security and effectiveness of rehabilitation programs tasked enough by the discipline and auxiliary services in fighting the coronavirus. In addition to work directly relevant to the security policy mentioned above, in view of the development of the COVID nineteen epidemic under the coordination of S B, the discipline services and the two auxiliary forces have actively participated in the work of the S A R government in fighting the epidemic. The task consent includes providing different political assistance to Hong Kong people outside Hong Kong, assisting in the preparation for the setting up of quarantine centers and temporary accommodation, as well as operation of such facilities, provision of emergency ambulance services or hospital admission transfer services for persons requiring isolation or suspected confirmed cases, assisting the Department of Health in issuing and enforcing quarantine orders, participation in the patrol and enforcement work relating to the requirement prohibiting group gatherings, carrying out inspection of the quality of surgical masks sold, as well as participation in expansion plan on mask production initiated by C S D. Apart from serving colleagues, the participants also include volunteers called retirees from discipline forces. In particular, for the expansion plan on masks production initiated by C S D, with the participation of serving and retired C S D officers as well as persons in custody, the masks production volume has increased by phases from a monthly average of one point one million pieces in January, and it is expected to reach five million by mid-April. We estimate that the production volume may further increase to seven million pieces per month in mid-May. The C S D will also explore the feasibility of producing other protective equipment. I thank colleagues and volunteers of various forces for their hard work and readiness to contribute in participating in the above work. Chairman, the representatives from departments and I are pleased to answer questions from members. Thank you. All the city members have pressed the button. Roy Kwong, Siu Ka Chen, Fan Nao Tzu, Zheng Vincent, Ma Feng Kuo, Ray Chen, Elizabeth Qu, Tan Yeh Chen, Kenneth Lau, Yip King Yun, Stephen Ho, Larry Chen, Eddie Chu, Andrew Wen, Ron Ching Chen, Doctor Zhang Chong Dai, Wilson Oh, Claudia Mo, Jeremy Tam, Prince Yoo Ping, Charles Mark, Elvin Young, Kenneth Leung, Lam Cheung Ting, Holden Chow, Priscilla Leung, Alice Mack, Christopher Jung, Yiu Si Wing, and Michael Look.
I hope that everyone will have a equal opportunity to ask questions, so three minutes each. Even for a three-minute slot each, some members may not get to the turn to ask questions. So be sort of tight about the time management. Three minutes for F and A. Don't try to use all your three minutes for your question. So please try to make sure that we get the largest number of questions asked. Roy Kwong. Well, we've been waiting for the Commissioner of Police for a long time. Mister Tang is here. I think he must have expected, he has been looking forward to the opportunity for a long time because he's eloquent. I think he's more than the C P. He should be taking up the post of the Secretary. Zero three one. I would like to look at that question. The money requested will go up to six hundred million dollars. I think it was said that a lawmaker has been praised by the C P for asking the local residents to disperse. I think it's good for you to praise our colleague because we have to deal with the situation on site. But then some of your colleagues are getting emotional. They will call protesters as crocodiles and they will easily resort to the spring of the O C form. So when it comes to the handling of such incidents, would you take this opportunity to say the following to the frontline journalists and come up with an apology? C P. Well, as you know that it is very dangerous to be present on such scenes because many rioters would block the roads and hurl petrol bombs at the scene. We do respect press freedom, but at the same time, the police have work to do. We have to suppress the violence. That's our first priority. Between the police and the media, there is a structural difference in terms of our roles. We have to enforce the law, we have to arrest the law because we don't want them to obstruct the public. Would you apologize to the media? Let me finish with my reply. I'm trying to do so. For friends of the media, they have their duty. They want to be closest to the scene so as to cover the event. But we are worried that there might be people behind the media trying to slash the neck of our colleague and try to escape with the offenders. Did this, it did happen. Now, we, we would like to meet with the frontline media reporters. I've only got thirty seconds left. Well, I know that for the operational calls signs, we believe that in this way we can identify the colleagues and follow on the action needed. I've been jotting down a number of operational calls signs. If I give them to you after then, other than reprimand, what else would you do? Operational calls signs are unique. According to such signs, we're able to identify colleagues. Well, just want to know what you want to do with them. If you simply want to find about the identity, then it can be considered. But then if it is for complaints, non-complaints, then it's a different story. Would I to go to three two one and three two three? That's about the C S I masks. It's my own question. Well, I would like to know about the production of the masks. I know that they are working around the clock, three shifts a day, and they have already got a lot of retired C S D colleagues acting as volunteers. Now, I understand from the speech that they have got two thousand. Are we talking about twelve hundred or two thousand volunteers? But that's not the most important point. But then I have learned from the female prisoners at Lo Wu that volunteers are volunteers, and so the quality would vary. In other words, there are quality control issues with the masks produced. In other words, this is adding to the workload of the persons in custody, and we are wasting the very precious raw materials. So have you noticed that volunteers might have accidentally wasted the raw materials and wasted the masks? You have praised the volunteers. Yes, I think they should get our commendation. But what about the persons in charge? I think they should get your recognition as well because they are working around the clock. For the cost of the C S I mask is thirteen cents each. If we take a box of fifty, in other words, it means that it is six dollars fifty a box. But then at the peak of the shortage of supply, it is said that you have to pay three hundred dollars for a box of C S I masks in the market. So you can see how much profit has been made out of it. I tried to ask about the logistics about it, but then the department is saying that it cannot be disclosed because of privacy concerns. I don't think it's a matter of privacy. It is only that you are preventing us from delving into the possibility of civil servants abusing the system. So please give me a reply.
Directive Correction Services Department. Like I said, for the two thousand people the Secretary referred to, really our off-duty and retired colleagues. As for the wasteage from production, I totally disagree. During the production, I also took part myself. And during the production, there will be some defective goods, which we rely on the Q C to screen them out. It's not that you can expect a hundred percent perfect. So what are the Q C figures? I'm asking, I'm not asking whether you agree or not. As for how many of them were defective, I don't have such figure. As for you didn't thank the person inmates, I disagree. Because when we implemented a third shift, I went to the lower correction institution and to thank those participating inmates. Okay, you got time to screen here, next thirty-five minutes, three minutes. And Chairman, after the whole entire entry expedition movement and also the epidemic, we see that now the police will become a reality because the police using the maximum violence, also the enforcement. When they're in justice and enforcement, there's no way to make a complaint. There's no mechanism to have oversight on them. And the late last month, a lot of the members of public come out to commemorate the thirty-first of August incident and Prince Edward. I can see that your colleagues would conduct body searches and, and take their mug shot and ask them to stand five in a row. And some of them are community organizers from Democratic Party who'd give their collect count, Miss Chan Po Ling. And who's accused of violating the five energy of the group gathering ban. All those five people doesn't know each other. But the colleagues assign them to stand five in a row and accuse them of breaching the group gathering ban. And another district councillor, Lee Kwok Kuen, from Y T M D C, was also intercepted by your colleagues and subject to a similar treatment. And last Friday, on the third of April, and last Friday, I personally witnessed myself that frankly, Yik at the door of the C G O, it was by the press con of a correction. There are dozens of people and you have colleagues advised them to separate him in bunch of four while they continue with the press con to outline the transport sector concerns. I understood Mister Yik's action at her studio. I'm not attacking him personally. I'm really charging the police of injustice and enforcement for while it could be similar and similar because those five people doesn't know each other. And yet you bind them together and, and of five and breach impeaching the group gathering ban. For those you know, you asked them to separate in the groups of four and it was all good. Commissioner, do you see this kind of practice and unfair enforcement is encouraged and condoned by you? Please be concise. First, I totally disagree that we've been enforcing the impartially, but using a minimal force. Unlike what you said. Please be quiet. We wouldn't care whether background, the district councillor have no privilege. They have to obey destruction at the scene. And based on the prevailing circumstances, we decide what action to take. For the high risk situation, we'll take a high-risk method. For a low risk, we have the corresponding tactic. Next, Mister Ho Ching Yuen. Stephen Ho, I can clarify, there might be a verbal gap. I hope you can clarify that whether you're enforcing the law impartially. I'm asking the Commissioner to clarify. Of course, the police will enforce the law impartially. Next, Mister Vincent Chang. Three minutes.
I'd like to ask about the Hong Kong residents and overseas. First, I would like to thank the Security Bureau and Immigration Department colleagues for this time have been helping, working very hard in helping Hong Kong residents returning home, whether for the Diamond Princess case and the Peru and the Moroccan cases. We can see the director and the S B colleagues have been working wholeheartedly to help those cause for assistance. On the other hand, we saw there's some, there's still quite a number of Hong Kong residents stranded overseas. I'd like to know whether the immigration or the S B, whether they have a figure on how many calls for assistance overseas and what are the distribution and how can Immigration Department help them? And second, on the establishment for the Immigration Department, for the downed pieces, I know the Immigration Department colleagues are overlect and the, then the case are quite, quite scattered. And terrible establishment, do you have any deployment to ensure the adequate manpower to help those Hong Kong residents overseas? We know that I have all the Hong Kong residents returning home will be healthy and we have some confirmed case from those from Peru, which we don't want to see. Would the immigration or the council officials to provide more support prior to the arrival to ensure that they can arrive home safely and healthily? Thank you, Chairman. As for the Mister Chang's question, of the number of citizens calls involve sixty-two countries and there are minimum of twelve hundred people have called for assistance. So we know that besides the Hong Kong government, the, all other governments have confronted with same problems with their own nationals scattered in different countries. As for each call request for assistance, we would do our best to provide practicable assistance. For example, for in providing daily necessities and medications, the immigration colleagues would try to arrange for them, especially they have to pass through the respective local councillors. The councillor offices would have to do all the running, especially the land transport controls and the air traffic control are very strict in latter places because there are basically no transport and some places are enforcing a curfew. Whether for the Immigration Department or the local council officials, I believe that the uncertainty and difficulty they faced is similar. When we try to render assistance, for example, whether to consider chartering a flight? Check Morocco, for example, would try talking to nine airlines and yet they were reluctant. So there's a lot of uncertainty. Time's up. Next, Mister Ma Feng Kuo, three minutes. I'd like to follow up on three, four, eight on the G F S. The general public have been supporting of the G F S work and very hope, hope that they will preserve the aviation heritage and also the elite memory. In twenty eighteen, the government had put the, um, retired Jetstream forty-one at the Kai Tech Park, which are very popular with aviation fans because this had high sentimental value. And at the same time last year, I asked the, um, heading glove service and whether they would consider preserving the dolphin helicopters and the super puma helicopters to enhance the offering and as a collective memory. And they, and the commissioner have, and they promised to, and Captain West had, Wu had managed to, to consider it. Another one, the super puma helicopter took part in the Sichuan earthquake rescue, which it has a very worthy of preservation. Captain Wu, Controller of G F S. Thank you, Mister Wu, um, Ma's question. The super puma and dolphin helicopters fleet currently enter the pre-retirement stage and we are arranging the decommissioning, where the parts and the spare parts were noted on Mister Ma's question and will actively consider their proposal. First, we'll need to consult the government legislative department and, and check the relevant procedures on how to put the super puma and dolphin helicopters for a commissioning, decommissioning. As for your proposal to display it at the Kai Tech Park, I will discuss with the relevant authorities. As for, it takes some time to complete the decommissioning. Expected the puma and the super dolphins will be formally decommissioned on the second of, third quarter, in which all the mechanical engineering procedures will be completed. When necessary, we'll follow up with Mister Ma. Next, Mister Ray Chan. O two five on the addition high for the police force. And this year's budget have the largest expansion of firepower and staff. I've asked Mister Paul Chan, they probably have other way we want and us, and get all the manpower and firearms they requested. You have to look at the capabilities. And he asked me to ask Christmas, Chris Tang himself. This financial year, you're expected to hire seventeen hundred police constables and inspectors. And this year, aim at eighteen hundred fifteen, and you only to hire seven hundred sixty-six of them, which is less than half of your target. This means it's difficult, harder to recruit them. If you're going to hire seventeen hundred, would you a lower standard even lower? Second, and for the Hong Kong Police College, what do you have sufficient resource and the facilities to train seventeen hundred new recruits? The question is not answered. As for the distribution of police force at the regional level, the eastern district, island district has more than that and the Wan Chi and central western district, and yet they have seven hundred seventy-two. And next year, they will have ten, seventeen, eighty-two. And as for western district, sixty-one. And for a north point, it's really worried about the law or the situation. And for eleventh of August, there are R D H K reporter that was injured by a Fujianese gang member. And yesterday received a letter claiming that basically concluded and no rest. You're short on manpower. What do you mean by finished on investigation? How do you define it? You counted by the number of days, if not this twenty-first of July, have concluded investigation, you issued a letter and claimed there was no arrest. You're not Fujianese, you're from Dongguan. So you're actually favoring the Fujianese again? Or the R D H K really deserve a beating? I only got a minute left. Thus, I want to answer this for all other departments would apply for resources which go through the consent of the Security Bureau. Thus, you see that any of the departments, including the police or the financial estimate can to support our bureau. Thus, our approval standards is just whether there any operational need. As we see last year, also public order events have exceeded fourteen hundred and most of them have turned violent. These were all plain to see the police must check appropriate deployment and put on standby. So after a complete investigation, does it mean to the twenty-first of July? We concluded, so North is very dangerous because the Fujian is gang beating people with immunity. Well, Chair only got like three minutes. Our second point, for any cases, we will only deal accordance with the evidence. Regardless of their political position, the police will deal with it by the evidence. While this, Chris Tag didn't take any question, while Mister Paul, Mister John leave the answer question. Can I at least Mr. Tag say a few words? You can ask other, other colleague to follow up for you. Since you think it's so important, I'll see it's important. Thus, I would like to ask the Secretary to talk about the eleventh of August situation or before the Commissioner. I'll leave it for the Commissioner. Well, the public want to know, is that really the case? Okay, okay, please be quiet, let them answer the question. Mister Tang, what point of order, Mister Christopher Chan? While you outclaim the Fujianese beating up people, I think there's a discriminating on the provincial background. Please rectify it. Mister Ray Chan, uh, uh, you really shouldn't be saying that. Okay, please be quiet. Could you let the Commissioner answer, please?
C P. Well, in relation to each and every case, we will act in accord, in accordance with the evidence collected and carry out an in-depth investigation. I won't comment on individual cases. We will take each and every case seriously and carry out our thorough investigation. Elizabeth Qu, three minutes. Since June last year, we have got violence and it is a matter of squash of policy and yet the public would only suffer. I'm afraid that there will be terrorism threatening our development. Do you know how much we have to spend on making good damages? Uh for the M G R buildings, government buildings, political complex, et cetera, et cetera. We spent over eight hundred million dollars, that's taxpayers' money. So as to repair and maintain the damaged facilities, not to mention the losses suffered by the businesses. Well, there has been a lot of violence since last June. And then Mister Law was killed by a brick hurt at him and then another man was uh. Set on fire. So for the police, don't you agree with me that you need more manpower? More advanced equipment so as to stop such violence and then we stop the terrorism. Well, Civic Party has been saying that they will continue with this I burn, you burn with me uh policy. Now they're saying that they would like to help the S M Es. I think they're being hypocritical. C P, please. C P. Well, regarding homegrown terrorism, we are really worried. For the past ten months. The rioters started with hurling bricks and then hurling petrol bombs and then live ammunitions, explosives. And they've been planted in public places, like on vehicles at low wood and public transport interchange. Just for the sake of advocating their cause, saying that the government must close the borders, otherwise they will blow up everything. We are worried. We have to combat homegrown terrorism. We need to step up our intelligence work. For the past ten months, in twelve different cases, we're able to discover explosives before they were detonated. Say, for example, um. Near a school, we found bombs um. Using um that we had the new bombs similar to the marathon um incident uh at in Boston. We've also got other have things like the pipe bombs. So far, no one has suffered any injuries. We have to count ourselves being lucky. So uh this is. Homegrown terrorism, they took the initiative. It is worrying. I think we should condemn such acts. We mustn't allow it to become uh glorified, because the next time the victim may be you yourself or your family members. We're going to enhance our capability. Say, for example, uh we have the bomb disposal um. Uh officers, we've also got a interdepartmental uh counter-terrorism unit. So as to teach the public how to identify such explosives. Next, ten your chance, three minutes. Thank you. Yesterday, Professor Chen, Sophia Chen. Told us that the police would follow up on the suspected violation of the prohibition. On group gathering committed by a lawmaker is cause concern. I can understand that, but what I cannot understand is that. There are things that have attracted. The attention of all the people in Hong Kong and even world attention, like July twenty-first. Uh for thirty minutes, uh no police came. On thirty-first of August, policemen rushed onto a train compartment to beat the citizens. And then a policeman blamed his police motorcycle into the crowd. But he only got a reprimand and he was still and he's still working as a policeman. And then when there's a live broadcast, a policeman uh showed the I D card of a reporter. And on the skills that he was too involved in his work. Now, in fact, you are changing your, you are changing your motto. Uh saying that you would be serving Hong Kong with honor, duty and loyalty. Well, I'm really concerned because please look at the level of trust by the people of Hong Kong in the police. Well, I have listed all the sort of findings of the opinion survey. Zero score, blue, and then the orange pillar or orange bar shows fifty. In the past, there were less than ten percent of the respondents could give you a zero mark. Now, I think you are getting forty-five percent of the respondents saying that they don't trust you. Now for the bars shown in blue, you see that it is getting, the levels are getting higher and higher. Over fifty percent of those interviews would give you a new score. C P, in August last year. You were favoring worse than the S A L G when it comes to public confidence. You have become a negative asset of the government. Now, for two billion dollars worth of overtime allowance in as short as eight months' time. There's more money than money spent on masks and you are getting more pay rise than others. What are you going to do for the most controversial cases arising from the protests? Are you going to um sort of um give us a comprehensive reply? Well, I think we have improved our ratings. In fact, we don't want to get the O T allowance. If the rioters don't come out, then we don't have to work overtime. Can you flow? One two seven and one two eight, for the social turbulence last year, it strained the relationship between the police and the public. And police officers were under lots of pressure, themselves and their family members were doped, hurting them physically and psychologically. Out in social media, we got a lot of fake news, biased reports. And in fact, there were Facebook accounts with the sole aim of smearing the police officers. Um thriving a bitch in the society, it is regrettable. I think in the future, I think the police should be quick in dispelling the rumor. And we should clarify the wrong nu- uh fake news, otherwise the police image will be affected. And this would affect the law and order and peace in Hong Kong. Well, in the year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, I did ask a question about the manpower, meaning the Hong Kong Police Facebook. I was told at the time that they would use their existing resources. Now I ask the same question again. Now it is said that uh we have got the social media communication division, they have got thirty officers. Um meaning the social media account. I would like to know when um the division was set up. And are they dedicated to the sole task of social media or whether they take on other tasks as well? And then for the Hong Kong Police Force Facebook, I think. Um in relation to clarification as well as um um. Other rumors um that have to be satisfied, I want to know more about the posts involved. Well, C P, well, thirty officers are working full-time in relation to social media platforms. As to the date that the division was set up, I will give you the information later. The post are mainly for crime prevention, like the methodologies, motors operandi. We have to um give clarifications, we want to remind the public and we have to clarify. The incorrect information. Well, others were. There were people who would like to commit crime or others could like to take advantage of law-breaking activities. They would like to do a blow to our law enforcement ability. Say, for example, there might be a child um praising us. But then they would try to distort it to make it appear that the child's pose or feedback is um. Unfavorable, so we need to clarify this. And then for major events. Uh we have also got important information on traffic and transport information for the public. So we use the social media platforms for this purpose. So the main purpose is crime prevention. Um messages and information to crack down on crime. Well, I would like to talk about the procurement of. Weapons. Then simulation to zero four nine, I don't think you can count on that to achieve your purpose. Well, there was a uh secondary sixth secondary student at Taipu Station. He did nothing at all, but then at least seven police officer um attacked him using their batons. Um the limbs, the head was uh was hit. And then he um bled from his head wound and then he broke his bones. He could not uh focus on his studies, he had to give up his studies. He's now resting at home, he's not going to sit today's year. So I'm afraid his future has been ruined. So for a student to be beaten up by the police in this way, and there was a teacher who had his eye injured. By the police, this would only cause anger in the minds of the public. Would you also share the anger uh as the C P when you are told about such acts? Well, I think this is not acceptable at all. Now, as the C P, have you ever tendered any apology for such apps? And have you ever uh offered any compensation? Have you tried to go after the law-breaking police officers? You cannot just count on getting more weapons. The approach adopted in this way would only worsen the situation. Well, secretary, the the lawmaker claimed that such and such took place. In fact, many people made similar accusations in the airwaves. I think what they should have done is to approach the capo and provide the information, otherwise this is not fair. If you just make such accusations on such a platform without any substantiation from evidence, it is unfair. Now, if you make such an accusation, then both parties must come up with the evidence. Well, secret uh chairman, I think the secretary's reply is meaningless. You better ask the C P to answer the question. The C P, please. Well, you are smearing the police force, it is unacceptable. Please don't take up more my time, ask the C P to answer. Well, we should be opposing violence instead of glorifying it. You mustn't try to justify each and every act of violence. So for such um. Untrue um accusations, I don't think lawmakers should repeat them here. Well, I think uh as the chair, let me say a few words. Lawmakers have the right and duty to query the government. And the government should also take the questions seriously, but then we must first of all have mutual respect. You must let others finish with their replies. I would bear in mind questions that haven't been answered. When there's the opportunity, I'll ask them to give you a reply. So please don't be. Boreded by the three-minute uh time slot. I think it would help if we all talk about the facts only. Well, I just want the C P to answer. I'm not going to make an exception again, you can't be exceeding the three-minute time rule. Well, please also keep quiet and uh observe the order while you are in your seat. Uh this is the legislature. Just like when we are in a classroom, we need to keep quiet. And don't try to make so much noise that it is agitating me. I, so C P. Regarding individual cases, certainly, there will be thorough investigation, will look at the accusations. Please don't just have a snapshot and focus on that. You need to understand what happened prior to that. For the uh anti-amendment bill exercise, young people came out to break the law. I think they are victims who urged them to come out to break the law, who told them it's right to uh break the law. Um they were misled to think that they are the um heroes. And they were led to think that hurling a brick at others would also be right. Stephen Hall, three minutes. Mr. Yip King Yun, your time has expired. Stephen Hall, Stephen Hall. Thank you, Chair. First of all, I've heard that certain colleagues have said that. There have been certain opinion surveys saying that uh the police was given a zero mark, others were said that. Police got ten marks only. I think it is because of the fake news. And so they have misled the public so as to result in such a judgment. There are still people who believe that people have died during the Prince Edward Station incident. Yip King Yun referred to a case saying that a certain person um was bleeding. As a result of police um beating him up. Well, in fact, we have also been shown that there were others who tried to use paint. So as to disguise uh to put up a show that they have been injured by the police. I think we need to respect the procedures, we need to base our judgment on evidence. So after the matter has been clarified, then the public would know who has been inciting. Uh the young people by abuse uh by having a lot of fake news. I think if you do this, uh maybe in a short period of time, we cannot clear the um the matter. But at least the public should. Learn about the truth. Just now, um Mister uh Mister Kwong tried to take things out of context. Of course, I cannot uh rule out that the C P and Mister Kwong were referring to part of what happened. Part of the truth, but then there were also cases of unlawful assemblies. When the police were charging forward, there were also lawmakers who stood in front of the uh crowd. And insisted on meeting with the commander. So um C P, please tell us whether such obstruction did take place. And then for the. Riots since June last year. Well, I understand that you have redeployed a lot of police officers, like even the marine police have been redeployed. To go on land to deal with the violence. This is all because the public thought that it's fine to break the law. And as a result, we have got uh a lot more illegal fishing activities and fishermen have been robbed. So government and the C P, do you agree with me and what is your solution?
C P. As for those obstructs at the scene, regardless of their background, whether they are citizen or lawmakers. As they break the law, we'll arrest and we'll prosecute to get evidence. Also noticed that a former legislator. Uh that been uh prosecuted and convicted. And now that we have deployed a lot of people, uh forces and other areas, so we can well uh step up on those other areas. Next, Mister uh Chen Hakan Gary Chan and also O O one and O three seven. And by in the government reply, and those non-reforming claims, and the majority of them. Uh come from Vietnam and India, about seven thousand of those, we made about forty percent of the cases. And the government expenditures also get a new year high at to one point two billion dollars. And the uh legal assistance from to previously uh over ninety billion to oh to a hundred twenty million, increase of twenty-five percent. And for the Indian and Vietnam, me is they have a stable politics and economy during very low. While there is so many claimants in Hong Kong. And the and for the government reply to the security panel in claim, others' claim is ninety-nine percent of these cases are not substantiated. And for Hong Kong, we can spend over one billion on this claim, is it really good value for money? Uh for the money we spent, when we can stop paying for this? I would like the uh secretary respond on thirty-seven. And see that um you can see uh the juvenile crime on the rise. Uh therefore, uh young people had robbed a a driver, the youngest being uh sixteen, a Thai cockchoy at snatching. There are two boys who are only thirteen-year-old. And the government responds, for those between age and twenty-five. Excluding the uh uh crimes against public order and all other criminal offenses, there are over five thousand of them. With so many uh young people in breaking the law, what's the underlying reason? And how do government interpret this? I wonder if the secretary and the C P can respond.
Thank you, Chairman. First, I will take the question on the non-reforming claims and the C P will talk about a juvenile crime. Were the top five. Uh nationalities making the claims versus Vietnam, India, Pakistan, Indonesia and Bangladesh. The Vietnam made about a one quarter and India about uh twenty percent. In our analysis, I believe they come here for take up unlawful employment. Well, for economic incentive and also in terms of pay, I believe. That they uh vast majority would come here to make a buck. And for unsubstantiated claims, for all this case that we dealt with in the past, I'll substantiate it around at oh point. Nine percent. So that means ninety-nine percent of those were unsubstantiated. So that means ninety-nine percent of those were unsubstantiated or rejected. Thus, uh for those uh claims they shouldn't stay in Hong Kong, we should remove them as soon as possible. But uh was we doing this and also that because this court of other people have made this as a law uh to remove anyone, they have to uh save them for not the uh torture claims and humanitarian treatment. That's the law laid down by the C F A, thus we should abide by the law. Next, Mister Editu.
Thank you, Chairman. Why the public, so many members of the public assign this goal is zero to police force? The four words issued by Yip Kin Yun, which described as a wicked cruelty, with a very apt description, besides wicked cruelty, you also try to hide your dirty linen. And your replies to the Finance Committee, we most often it pops up in the word is that inappropriate to disclose. What it shows up thirty times in the reply. And seventy claims are not in a position to disclose, eleven claim they're not able to provide, and once they claimed uh not suitable for disclosure. Well, what could it be disclosed? For example, the number of operational call signs on how many were printed? And how many Mills Barrier, no. And how many uh uh tear gas bullet release, no. Well, you couldn't even disclose number of charges you procure for the police force. Or the model number of the charges could not be disclosed to the public. And Chairman, one particular question, even um the Secretary wouldn't stand it. S B O nine one. So what was the question about? They're asking um the on uh November nineteen on the uh external expense on personal entertainment. In the reply, I claimed that um and it for the whole police force, um they spent about one point oh one billion, which inclusive of the C P's entertainment expenses. So even the security bureau in the response at to business question had also stated um that he spent two hundred thousand thousand entertainment himself. And Secretary, uh why the guy behind you can be so secretive? I want him to tell us what, are there any uh ceiling for the uh entertainment expenses? Does meaning he can check in forty-one point oh one million himself, as assuming office and on nineteenth of November, and how much had he spent on entertainment? First, I'd like to clarify, this is inaccurate. Uh what Mister Chu described. In terms of the control entertainment expenses, I am quite confident of C P. Very often that the rank of some features are often high tree. For example, uh for taking certain flights, it could uh take a hu- a higher class. And I'm asking for an answer, what was Mister Lee talking about? I'm talking about, I'm asking him for figures. I'm asking the Commissioner. What was I talking about? So what's the ceiling for the entertainment expenses for C P? And Secretary, can you uh give it a ceiling? As for the entertainment expenses for C P, as like say other staff will also abide by different guidelines and restrictions, it all comply with our requirements. Uh Mister Andrew Wen can follow up later, Mister Andrew Wen. Three minutes. I'd like to follow up on uh S B one nine three. On the performs and the re- uh remuneration for itself. And um Freud in nineteen oh one have issued a classic book is called uh the the Daily Media, it is a super ego. In the subconscious situation had really disclosed the truth, which he called it Freudian slip. And other words is well, I'm inspired by the Commissioner. Well, during the entry tradition movement, the blue ribbon for quite a few months have keep attacking those as supporting the ancient tradition and led to large number of texts and welding knives and batons unfolding chairs and and after finished assault, the police escort this uh them out, there are uh clips and videos going around. And for which justice have created by the police or actually um uh co- co- allowed by the police. And on the Lamb Chuck Ting on the thirtieth of June, and he was beaten and actually threatened to thrown off the bridge, the police did not make any rest and even escort the assailants. Uh not escorting Mister Lam, there are photos and video. And we submit to the police for investigation, that's what the Secretary said. What happened on twenty-fifth of March, the cloud is closed, no investigation, no arrest. And like Mister Ray Chan, on eleventh of August, the future needs get attacked in North Point, hitting the R T H K English reporter. What happened now? There are clips and videos and the truth and what all uh with all the weapons. But and it didn't go in there, there's no arrest. So we have a video that I and photo identified faces, and yet the police couldn't claim couldn't arrest anyone. Does that mean that um to different uh enforced standards that will be no arrest with the wedding in Dodge to Blue Ribbon? I mean, you actually invented um selling privately, may I ask the C P? For such biased performance of police, we received it uh reasonable sensible, is that what you call impartial? Or under your leadership, that um that you act, deep down, you will not be impartial. Why are you worth it two hundred thousand dollars a month? So maybe you have, you may be a psychological problem you just uh described. You didn't miss that on eleventh of November. I'm asking about my case, why are you referring to other cases? Well, I'm asking you, those cases are in for trust, was a man that being hurled a brick. I'm asking these cases whether impartial, we're investigating impartially. Anyone regardless of their background, I'll make only arrests if they break the law. While there's no arrest, why? Just on twenty-first of July, the white gang, we have arrested thirty-seven of those. Chair, will you to answer my question? And one uh spraying people with the fire hose. Well, the why you allow to burn time, asking specific question. I'm asking whether do impartial, whether you're worth it uh three hundred thousand a month in pay? Well, time's up. I couldn't. Okay, um let me state this clear. Listen to me. You, while you only got three minutes, and yet you spent two minutes forty-five minute second into second. And you only got like like about ten seconds left and you start yelling. If you continue this, I'll need to get more police more time to finish his reply. We have to be fair, everyone would get their turn. Well, what what you said is true, nobody knows. As for what the police said was true, we have no idea. And yet, everyone could be afford opportunity to make representations. Uh please be quiet, Mister Wen. Everyone would want at to reply yes or no, but however, is sometimes it is more than yes or no, need to give you some background. We need to have a rational analysis, what's wrong with that? Need to make use of time, there's no uh point in blasting people. What question? And Chairman, just now I heard Mister Wen and the C P arguing. And the C P has said that uh as uh spraying people with the fire hose, I couldn't get the context. Certainly, you're referring to the twenty-first of July Yulong incident. But because uh uh was that was repaying the fire hose, that's why the triads uh stormed into Yulong Station to attack people, just want to clarify. I would carry on with this, with this clarify this and that, because I couldn't figure what he said, otherwise I couldn't follow up. Well, because it's the first time we come across it, one time we can manage the time. On the other hand, while we are braving the epidemic, not come here to argue, hope that we don't forget today is the a special F C to dealing with the budget. Whenever I have yet to hear anyone asking for the expenses estimate. While I talk about it for moments of the police water, really worthy of a pay rise at uh more staff and as equipment, uh but listen, get agitated. Well, how could we uh uh this uh debate, because everyone should get adequate time. Okay, I'll make the exception this time. I'll ask the C B to clarify, however, we don't take this opportunity to and abuses, otherwise the meeting can continue, because uh the uh path for us, we need to clarify a lot of things. Because uh they remember assisting, there were deaths on thirty-first of August, where the public is wide to know whether you're telling uh the truth or not. I would not allow for the qualifications, use use of our own time instead.
Yes, please go ahead. Yes. Chair, just a quick point, when you continue to chair the meeting, ask them to be concrete in their replies. Uh so please don't um avoid my question, so please uh warn them. No, I'm not going to warn them. I think I think that's the approach that I adopt as well. But as to whether you will be, um it would be such that they have to answer in a way that makes you happy, then it will be difficult. I think what's important is for mutual respect. If this is practice, then officials will take your questions seriously. But if you try to um imply something else, then they may not want to answer the questions in the way you like. C P, I keep calm. Just now, what I said was that earlier on, Andrew Wen said that we were being biased, saying that we were not impartial in our investigation. I tried to cite examples to establish that we've been impartial. We've been looking into different uh into all sorts of cases irrespective of the backgrounds of the parties involved, including July twenty-first in Yulong. There were people clad in white, dash into the train compartment to beat up people. We are concerned with reprimand such um violent attackers. We arrested thirty-seven and we prosecuted six. There were also other scenes, including those shown on T V screens. There were people clad in black, using fire extinguishers and hoses down other people with water. We are still investigating into the case, we have yet to make an address. I was using the two examples to show that we have been impartial and unbiased. Mister Ronny Chan, three minutes, thank you, Chair. S B zero double three, my own question. The C P asked, told us about the need to use social media platforms to popularize messages and to clarify certain issues. Well, when we have freedom of information, we have to make sure that the information is correct. Singapore last year passed a law to make sure that there won't be any distribution of fake news. Social media platforms have to ensure the accuracy of the information. And then for Thailand, you may be sent to jail for five years and one hundred thousand um dollars. Um but if you distribute the fake news. So other than asking the police uh to mend the social media platform, do you have other um reaction? Do you have other measures to make sure that you're more proactive in combating the fake news? In your reply, you have also referred to the commission of crime by young people and and especially students. And it has got worse. Now, you told us about the general approach. In your main reply, you have talked about the work at school. You have relied on school, police, schoolies and officers as the bridge between the police, schools and students. This is what you have been doing. But I wonder if you're going to devote more resources? And are you going to explore more innovative ways to make sure the students know that they need to be law-abiding and they establish the correct set of positive values? Secretary, I'll give a succinct reply, and then I'll defer to the C P. For fake news, well, um it's prevalent online on social media platforms. We are all concerned. Whenever we encounter incorrect information, instantly we will uh disseminate the correct information and via different channels. If you do come across such incorrect information, please alert us and please try to stop it. It is important to provide correct information, accurate information. We're also looking at the legal means to deal with the matter. Understand that the Law Reform Commission would like to look into the matter. So we'll be watching the development of the L R C. Thirdly, we'll also monitor the overseas development so as to make reference to their um latest initiatives, C P. Thank you, Chair. Well, we've been relying on the police, schoolies and officers. We've also got the uh junior police corps. We have got junior police corps teams at schools. Today is not the right time uh to um re- to reactivate that channel. Doctor Chen Chong Tai, for July twenty-first, the C P said that there were different scenes. Well, at about nine o'clock, my ward office in Yulong at Kai Te, there was this lawmaker, Jonas Hall. He was shaking hands with the attackers, uh clad in white. And then we have got the video clips. My office is right there. I can provide the witnesses and the video clip clips. My question is simple, when are you going to arrest Jonas Hall? When are you going to arrest Jonas Hall? Could you answer the question? Everyone wants to know whether Mister Hall has funded the white-clad attackers. Well, I need to tell each and every citizen in Hong Kong. Whoever breaks the law, including everyone here, will face the administration of justice. So if there's evidence to show that somebody has broken the law, the law enforcement agencies will enforce the law. If you provide information to the police for investigations purpose, we welcome. The police will take the matter seriously and they will see what to do with it. And then the police will seek advice from the Department of Justice. So the principle is clear, as the C P has said. A L E A will act on the basis of evidence irrespective of the background of the law-breaking party. Everybody is equal before the law, no one enjoys privileges. We have to act in accordance with the law. For July twenty-first, I received a call for help. Yulong residents told me that um they have been deceived, scammed. That is, somebody uh would provide service and then he will get money in return. But then he has been deceived because he didn't receive the money. Should I turn to the C P to get help? If it is a criminal uh matter, you can approach the police. If it is corruption, go to the I C A C. Again, um different citizens have been forwarding the information to the police and the I C A C. Law enforcement agencies will act in accordance with the law, no one is above the law. John Lee, you're good. You have been taking up all the responsibility. But then you're going to have to step down later on. Well, July, uh sorry, August eleventh. Unfortunately, I was right next to the R T H K reporter. I'm showing you this photograph, you say that the investigation has been completed. Does it mean that the attacker holding the pole uh will escape the long arm of justice? I recall seeing many photos. There's this photo, attackers throwing objects at others. And then there were, there was someone trying to fend off the op- uh to shield um the attackers. I want to know whether the investigation has been completed or whether it's a case of being impartial. Nang Chi Chang, well, for some lawmakers, they have been telling young people that if you go to jail, then your life is much more enriched as a result of the jail term. Now, for the teenagers at secondary schools, they are also breaking the law. Early this month, I came across a news story. The police arrested people engaged in homegrown terrorism. Uh they were found manufacturing explosives and they were in possession of guns, et cetera. I won't go into the details of that case. Now, the Secretary said that he was concerned about homegrown terrorism. But then there are lawmakers who publicly encourage the young people to engage in acts that would send them to jail. They don't know what this is all about and they don't know about the consequences of being imprisoned. So Secretary, for such encouragement, would you regard it as tempting others to break the law, inciting others to break the law? And what is your countermeasure? I know that it's difficult to recruit police officers, you can only fill half of your target numbers. There are also people who could think that being a policeman is a bad guy because people over there would always call policemen as black cops. So because of the poor image of police officers, many people deterred from So because of the poor image of police officers, many people deterred from becoming a policeman. So what are you going to do to raise the morale of the police and enhance the image of the police? And enhance our capability to crack down on the crimes? Secretary. Anybody aiding or abetting others to commit an offense would be tantamount to having committed the crime himself. So irrespective of his status, his position, and irrespective of the platform that he makes the statement. So if you uh plans subsidizes funds and encourages others to do so. Then you have to face the consequence and you will be uh punished irrespective of your background. Just now, as to the emergence of the homegrown terrorism, it is indeed a very dangerous trend. Well, the explosives themselves are dangerous, and then it seems that many people choose not to mention it. For an explosive. Uh to be planted anywhere, well, if it is detonated, uh it it won't discriminate. And anybody around it will be killed, maimed, we did find a ten KG bomb. Should it be detonated, the whole building will be torn down, you, there are people who glorify such unlawful acts. But then if we don't come forward to condemn it, then to a certain extent, we are condoning it, we are giving a quick, we are giving recognition to it. So for such homegrown terrorism, well, I think uh the police. Has been doing good job in terms of gathering intelligence and pre- carrying out preemptive uh work. But then we need to be on the alert and we need to pay attention to this. Claudia Mo, three minutes. Well, the so-called homegrown terrorism, I think in a broad brush approach, he's trying to use this as a white card. And try to justify everything, for police brutality and police violence. Well, we have seen live broadcast of unimaginable police brutality. But it appears to me that you think that you are above the law, well, you may try to dismiss it by saying that it is very dangerous at the, on the, on the ground. Policemen have to care for their personal safety and therefore they have to use the appropriate level of force. But how can you use that to justify blinding a female reporter? They have already withdrawn, and then the policeman walked, returned and sought and blinded her eye. I don't think you are qualified to make such a statement, you say that you respect press freedom, you are not qualified to do so. Now, I have to name the CP, I asked him this question, ten days ago, I wrote to you. Asked you to reply to me personally, instead of referring the matter to the capital, how come that? You allow policemen to grab five people um randomly on the street. Ask for an ID search and then accuse them of group gathering, you need to answer this question right now, CP. Thank you, Chairman, well, you used to write me a lot of letters. I I don't have time to be at your pen pal, are you going to answer my question, I'm going to, don't interrupt me. Regarding individual cases, we're still looking into the cases, including the Indonesian lady reporter. And we are still in the process of investigation. Um we have been asking the victim for homegrown terrorism, indeed, this is worrying. Well, that's not my question, my question is, five people were asked to line up in a line on the street, and they were accused of breaking the law. Is that the way you enforce the law? No, you started with homegrown terrorism, I did make it clear, that's not my question. Now let me come to the prohibition on group gathering, we need to gather evidence. In other words, we have to find out whether they came out for, together their identities. And then we have to check what we saw on the ground, we have to put the pieces together. And then we'll check if we have got sufficient evidence to bring a prosecution. Under the prohibition on group gathering regulation, if necessary, we have to seek legal advice from the D F J, he has been most disrespectful.
Mister Jeremy Tam. Well, there are a lot of Hong Kong residents stranded overseas, well, uh over a week ago, there. Are a group of Hong Kong residents stranded in Japan, India, there are about seven hundred people, I hope that this secretary and the director of immigration can deal with them expeditiously, that's not my question. Please don't reply to that. SP one eight six, that was my own question, the last part of my question, as we refer on the allocation warrant. In twenty nineteen to twenty S of the twenty ninth of February. That the total amount funded received by allocation warrant to police for the received two hundred and thirty one million dollars. So how many departments have issued this uh allocation warrant? Commissioner or Secretary? The allocation warrant. Well, I really reply myself, I'm asking how many departments are involved? Well, the different, the the police force have provided security for various departments. And since um for the security work, they need to uh in expenditure, well, for the uh central. God, what departments, there are twenty two departments and there are other smaller departments. So twenty two, so for the allocation warrants with a maximum ceiling of ten million, for the two hundred and thirty one million, that means. There are maximum about twelve, over twenty departments, no. I don't understand, to uh protect Hong Kong or a department, isn't that the inherent duty of the police force? So when other departments require protection, do we actually need to pay for it? So you have, they have been paying together two hundred and thirty one million dollars and this year. And you reached two hundred and thirty one million and not enough, and also do, over the town allowances of over two billion, that's not enough. And yet, we need to charge protection fees for other departments for over two hundred million dollars. The member has a incorrect understanding, asking for the details, how do you determine, you claim you're offering a a security? So we need to provide security for for department, and yet you're actually charging them. Well, I I think the member doesn't know how allocation works, it must. Be able to within the same subhead, which subhead, the time is up. And Deputy Secretary. I would like this. Uh Reslan would like to say something, the allocation warrant is still within the subhead of each department. Uh uh not uh be uh is uh in. Hush by the police department, for the relevant departments have really incurred a, asking police to incur expenditure for them and the. Amount should be a fit for the appropriate state in the subhead. Next, Mister Pun Shuping, three minutes. Well, the the latest budget have allocated five hundred seventy five million. For uh enforcement of various the agencies, which include the police force. And in terms of combating or competent acts and maintaining law order, I see that as important, so I fully support it, I have two questions. The reply number, the first one. Three O seven. On the first responder arrangements and your response, you claim that in twenty nineteen. You have a comprehensive review on the dispatch criteria. And since January this year, there are new arrangement in place. So what's the difference between, what difference now, and also what, and also do you see any changes in terms of number of dispatchers? Another question on immigration department on the talent admission scheme, and you also replied to me. That for the various schemes, you currently admitted over fifty three five thousand. And for the general employment policy, there are eight thousand uh hundred and ten that classified others. And for the mainland talents, at a hundred twenty of them refer to other applications, you have this footnote, you're referring to your footnotes, of course. Which included the F catering and and healthcare and tourism. Now, you see the labor market have turned upside down and we expect to rise and to import this kind of foreign talent. Would that policy be changed to ensure? Uh the the um local uh get jobs, in terms of establishing and dealing with employment policy, you have responded. And altogether, there are a hundred staff responsible for them, and you see a huge difference in terms of caseload. For each section, so I don't know what's your uh deployment, for example, for G E P. You deal with thirty thousand cases and yet there are twenty colleagues, in some schemes, you're admitting five to six hundred people and yet you have assigned uh. Uh ten or more staff, are you ensure there were effective deployment of the staff? To better handle the applications, I believe that uh uh this actually only respond in writing. Next, Mister Charles Mark. I'd like to follow up my own question, SP one five nine one uh six O two one six eight. Hope that the police can elaborate on the use of technology. Uh for one five nine, I'm asking um to obtain a video footage from other departments. And the uh reply claims that you have them provide a comparable statistics. Uh what is that being too numerous, I see this kind of response quite often. Well, sometimes I wonder and have you compiled statistics because we'll come back next year and yet you will uh never do so and you give it the answer year after year. Well, this is actually very important because you want to find out. That the the really camera is supposed to capture a a littering, but it was actually used for other purposes, there's no way to access oversight for one six O. Would there any technology project, for example, video analytics and facial recognition technology that have been applied? In your response, you claim, well, same as I ca- uh once, question one six nine, for uh involving those to a capable, investigated and. And a capability since in position to disclose, last year, I've asked the security bureau. Uh for the add, for the details on the tech net block vote, uh which you disclosed, you have the fourth generation of commanding system. So you can disclose these, but not uh uh the others for one six eight. For a develop, uh the uh procuring and developing new system, have you engaged any local on O C's contractors? And you claim that you have not as best uh uh have a breakdown on that, can you just? Tell us for our convenience and also you answer the question, can you? Tell us that what kind of question you would reply to, in instead of just unwilling to take an answer. Without such information, how will we access oversight, I just want to find out more, why is that allowed? Well, the government supply information to the members only on a practicable circumstances. For any disciplinary services or department, in terms of resource deployment, the department first. Need to decide on how to deal with information and uh what uh statistics they will compile, at first they will decide whether there are need for them and relevant to exciting the duty. On this premises, if some of the information also available and answer members' question will provide them, however, it's impossible. Uh to uh, I have a department to take to compile statistics for lawmakers, that's, well, this information are definitely. Uh able to be collected, we can aid government funding to uh to pass statistics. Next, Mister Alvin Young, what uh late last year when scrutinizing the civil service uh pay adjustment proposal. And civic quest, partly question, and for the March till eleventh of November on the overtime allowance is set nine to fifty million. And for uh two five eight one eight M, the bureau had replied that the public events related um with about um one point nine two billion. From uh June to November, uh nine to fifty million, and to uh December to February, that's uh nine hundred seventy million. And so there will be an average of one fifty eight million, and now they have a three twenty twenty three million per month. That's almost a double, what have you, what if you must, due to epidemic. Most people have stayed at home, why you spend so much on overtime allowances? And for the June to November, the expenditure. And for this, that's a process before uh for the uh to the allows to be dispersed. And what, and the only in August that they get the overtime allows occurred in June. Then for said March, after June and July, for about a ninth to tenth of uh June, there are lots of events and all go and all the events throughout uh March, June and July. For every colleague uh of on, but every month they obtain uh sixteen thousand dollars in terms of the allowances. Our colleagues, we're not really keen on over talents, we are already pocketed, don't need to tell me about it. Uh I want to find out for the past two months, can you provide a breakdown, then how much overtime last we incurred and for January and February? Yes. Well, I don't have the the monthly breakdown, I can pray after the meeting, you're supposed to be prepared before you come to let's go. Well, then Jackie Chan taught you are supposed to do your homework before coming to let's go. Okay, please don't talk with each other. As Chairman, okay, we should do our own help when it comes to statistic and accounting. For a particular month or quarter, only at the end that we will have this statistics. And whether for uh a supplementary funding. Or for a vehement, they will need to uh submit to to let's go, at the conclusion of each quarter. Well, we'll we'll provide such figures after the quarter ends, if they, members would have seen it if they have done their homework. Next, Mister Cantillon, three minutes, SP one four one, when you come here to refunding, what? So here we tell us how, here we have a budget for this stunt procurement of stun gun and net guns, yes or no? Okay, I'll take the question. So what equipment would we require, we're still uh looking into it, so you're looking at, so how could you come up with a budget? If you don't know what weapons it, so what are those A, B, C, D, E's? Of course, we need to procure weapons, actual, those new type of weapons are clearly uh looking into it, our principles that have to be as safe enough. Okay, I'll take another angle, when you're procuring the lethal weapons, would you on a price on a technology? If both factors were still waiting, I'm talking about the procurement policy with the police. Commissioner. When procuring weapons, there are a lot of things to look into, there are a basket of factors. I want to tell you, how do you follow with the procurement policy for the uh G L D, yes or no? We follow the standing policy of the government, what do you mean uh it's like policy, is that the G L D policy? All departments including G L D and other real plus, how about the technology and the price weighting? Price and technology in terms of procurement, uh what is your weighting?
First of all, whenever we want to have a procurement, we'll look at the nature of the equipment. If you don't know, why don't you say that uh you will give me the answer in writing? I'm talking about the scoring table, now you can't come up with. I'm talking about the scoring table, now you can't come up with a different percentage if you buy. A gun or when to buy something else, so chairman, please ask him to give me the reply. Secretary, well, as to the approach mentioned a moment ago. In fact, that's the same approach that we used um when we procure the equipment. What is meant by the usual approach? Well, let the secretary speak. If we want to procure anything, including equipments, the factors to be considered will be different. Are you going to give me the reply? We will follow our guidelines and rules to fit each and every case, are you going to give us the percentages, the weighting? As I have said, the percentages would differ from one item to another, what is the general approach? Sure, we can give you the information when in writing, please. Now for your. If you say that the quantity procured is an operational detail, now C P. Can you tell us about your establishment for C T B, O T B, C C C B, et cetera? Yes, after the meeting, if you're interested, I can give you the information, if I can have the breakdown figures for you. Yes, in writing, please, in fact, you could uh put in uh written supplementary questions. Because a lot of members might not get a chance to ask questions, I'm chatting three minutes. Chair, I have to declare that in relation to July twenty first. I'm taking some full action against the C P for condoning the people to attack the uh citizens. Well, Tam King Kong, you have been collecting intelligence on that day. You all the time have clean clothes officers monitoring the case and then there were hundreds of tribe members armed. And gathering at gay date, you knew that citizens were beaten up at gay date and then they went inside the Yunnan. Uh station to beat up people and yet you allow the attackers to leave. And you allowed the attackers to um attack the citizens, the citizens used. The fire hose to uh defend themselves and yet you are putting, you are trying to distort the truth. C P, are you going to do the following? There is tender public apology to the citizens for condoning the attackers to attack the citizens. You talk about uh irrespective of the status, I think the first one to be arrested would be you yourself because being a public officer. You haven't discharged your duty, secretary, this is inappropriate. Even though a member has stated that he has a conflict of interest, it doesn't mean that. Uh the legal procedure hasn't started. Now, for you to make such an accusation or allegation on such an occasion. I'm not, I cannot see how this is going to help the legal action. I think you better suspend the timer. It's a simple question, on different occasions, Tang Wen Kang talked about the July twenty first incident, he had his own. Story and the police spokesman also uh referred to it many times. Now, they are avoiding this uh issue, is it because they know that um they want to dodge our questions? Well, please observe our rules of procedures uh for rule forty one. Well, you can not um prejudice a case which is yet to be ruled by the court. Now, you have a direct role in such a court case, so it is not appropriate uh to do so. C P, for July twenty first, many citizens are concerned, so please share your uh view with us. But of course, you cannot go into the facts of the case, I'm asking if he would like to tend an apology. There are other things other in addition to uh willing or not willing to apologize. Well, I think the request just now would not be appropriate, so I don't think the C P uh should. Comment on the point requested by a member, so John Lee, you dare not. Now, the chairman had ruled that he should give a reply, outrageous, well, for this particular issue. Well, for anybody to pass any judgment on this matter. Since the um case is still ongoing in the court of law, I don't think anybody should make. A unilateral accusation in this way, Lam Ching Ting, you are a party to the case. It is most inappropriate for you to refer to this case here, I try to remind you, you are involved in the prosecution. Please do not draw on it, your time is up as well, as simple as that, I'll just let you have a word. How come that he's so afraid? It is such a simple question, he does not answer the question, so he must have. Crams over it, it's not a matter of whether he's afraid or not, it's a matter of the legal procedures involved. And the rule is so clear and yet you're still trying to draw on it, I hope you won't obstruct the proceeding. Helena Wong, point of order. John Lee said that it is inappropriate for member to refer to it because it involves an ongoing case. But then, Tam King Kong. Refer to the blackheaded people using a water hose to attack others. But then you didn't stop him, he was also referring to the same case. Now, if you are not being fair when you chair the meeting, then you're not going to be convincing. Let me say this, Helena Wong, you have to be fair. Just now, he was depicting different scenes, one among many, at that time lawmakers did not query. Because he wasn't referring to Lam Ching Ting, now Lam Ching Ting raised this point and then the C P didn't say a word. So how come that you say that I'm not fair, Tam King Kong made that comment and then. Others would like to talk about July twenty first, but you don't allow, didn't allow him to answer. You have to stop, you have to stop, listen to the chairman. What is important is that you can't be unreasonable, I have been most patient, I know that I've been very fair, I give the floor to either side. I cannot bias towards the police, I cannot bias towards the lawmakers for legal issues. Or for um for for such points, I will have full respect for that. The last would be, the next one would be holding child, chair, chair. Most unacceptable, yes, give him the floor, switch on the mic of Lam Ching Ting. For July twenty first, at the council meeting and on other occasions, I spoke many times. No chairman told me that public officers need not answer and should not answer. And John Lee had also given answers on many occasions, but today suddenly he dared not answer the question. It is quite clear that the police dare not face his um history of darkness. It's your own view, I have been fair in chairing the meeting, Houghton Chow, now the C P is here. And um we know that some police officers. Have been infected by the uh virus unfortunately. So I would like to uh send my regards to them and hope that they will have a speedy recovery. Well, during the riots, uh the rioters have been escalating um their um equipment. Or now lately petrol bombs have been heard and numerous of them have been heard at the police stations. If you don't regard this as homegrown terrorism, what else is it? And then, in the face of such lethal weapons, namely petrol bombs. And you're still saying that the police are not allowed to escalate their um equipment. Then you're putting the policeman's lives at risk, I think there is a need to give them the necessary equipment and equipment. Now, chairman, yesterday. There was a court ruling on a J R case earlier on, the J P O A in order to protect the policeman. Who had been doxxed and even their family members had their personal data and information disclosed, jeopardizing their personal safety. So there was this judicial review asking the E A C not to disclose the voter register. So as to make sure that the policeman will not be doxxed as a result of the riots, now the court has not ruled in their favor. It's up to that party to uh got an appeal, but then in relation to the protection of the privacy of the police officers. And if somebody tries to make use of the voter register for the purpose of doxing and other. Very um despicable activities, what would you do in return in reaction? Now, understand that there have been six hundred and seventy seven cases of doxing. I want to know whether you can speed up your law enforcement so as to make sure that you have measures to protect your own officers and their family members. So I just wondered if the C P can share his views with us, could take the question? Let me answer the question, first of all, we respect the court ruling. As a result of doxing, we have had white terror, I think we have all seen it. The privacy has been breached and then most people would like to do this so as to cause fear, so as to silence them. I think this is most um, it is very bad for the society as a whole. Now, the court gave recognition and injunction order was made. Um so as to prevent people having malicious intention. Because by doxing their privacy or their data, uh the officers may be harmed. Doctor Priscilla Lam, now many people from the opposition camp had advocated for the disbandment of the police force. And their level of expenditure should be um driven down to zero. I think this is wrong, it means that we are going to condone homicides, murders, arson, et cetera. I hope the people of Hong Kong won't be misled by the radicals, I don't think we should be led by the nose, I think what we advocate should be in line with the proper interests of Hong Kong. In twenty fifteen, I was the first one to advocate an offense of insulting the police officers. For that to be made illegal. At that time, people said that we should try to advocate harmony. Um I didn't hand in my private members bill, but currently hatred of police is so serious. That even when a police officer was infected with Covid nineteen. There were people cursing the police officer and wishing that the whole family uh would be infected as well. Now, what we have seen is that petrol bombs have been heard at police stations. And then um verbal abuses were heard at the law officers, uh the police officers on duty. In overseas countries in Canada, Australia, uh et cetera, which practices, which practice common law. They won't allow policemen to be insulted in this way, they won't allow police stations to be subject to such attacks. And then for false news and then for the uh allegations. Now, lawmakers are also repeating this allegations like body being found floating in the waters. And gang rape at a police station or a victim having their eye uh then uh injured. Without any evidence at all, we need to think, we need to be reasonable, Hong Kong is a place where we respect the rule of law. So. Either the secretary or the C P can answer this question, when it comes to the law enforcement work. What do you need so that you won't be at their mercy, so that they are allowed a free hand to say whatever they like? Because in this way, many people will be misled, in particular, our young people.
Thank you, chairman, uh we can deal with it under the existing laws that will pursue it rigorously. You can see that the police recently have a target at the online comments involving. Of violence or inciting violence, where we had make arrests and and also make prosecutions. And I will uh explore with the privacy commissioner on how to save guys and privacy. I understand that the C M A B, uh working working at this, and time's up secretary, next is Alice Mac, three minutes. I looked for S B O three six, that's question be raised by Mister Gary Chan. That whether the police have considered investigating infiltration of foreign political groups and foreign radicals and ask for the figures. And the police responded that the police will conduct investigation enforcement actions against individuals. With respect of political connections. I understand that the police should ignore the political backgrounds or other factors. And need to uh enforce the law stringently. Well, for the most part of the year, we noticed that during the social unrest. There were suspected foreign elements interfering and foreign political. Uh forces infiltrating, I know that the police wouldn't. Not uh look at the political stance and the backgrounds, whether the act itself is lawful. But for this, the secretary, would you investigate whether any foreign political groups. Uh infiltrating in Hong Kong that led to social unrest at this terms, or would you have any follow up action? This question you not should directed to C P but should be the secretary instead, so secretary, would you um investigate infiltration? By foreign political groups that led to unlawful acts in Hong Kong which affected our law and order and whether we can send them study or take action. And S B O three seven, we see that um the number of juvenile offenders have been on the rise. I believe that they have been uh related to recent social unrest. Then not only the young people out that uh would like to the um. The undermining of the law and whiteness because uh it believes and someone said that uh going to the prison actually makes you enrich your life. So how do we strengthen the sense of the law and. And also S B one five O on the establishment. And Hong Kong's economy is in very poor shape, recently we have uh received a lot of uh public complaint. That helped the uncrippled intermediary and for this kind of scam, did the police have enough manpower for to investigate this? And also we have group gathering ban, would the police have enough manpower to enforce it? The W uh irrespective of the backgrounds and this status where you would uh prosecute. I'll take the last question first, with anyone breaking the law of Hong Kong. Uh we will uh deal with it in accordance with the law and like you mentioned, if anyone have breached the group gathering ban. That will um act according to the law, that no one who enjoys the privilege and we need to face legal sanctions. And regardless whether as a foreign nationals or the background, if they break the law in Hong Kong, including. They're organizing or planning for illegal activities, we will tackle with legal means. Next, um Mister Dr. Genius Ho, my question is S B O O nine. Nine ninety seven and hundred half or it's really uh oh nine nine, we talk about article twenty three. However, before I ask for the progress on that, I want to make a clarification, because just now some members. Have keep uh criticizing the police politically, which gave it a very biased picture. And right for uh July twenty first or thirty first of on August or November twenty third and so on, and it should investigate it without fear in favor. Especially uh uh the very tall and very uh dumb member. Someone that should be investigated, I should it should be punished severely, who are really the troublemakers. I believe the police uh wanna care for the status of lawmakers, including myself. Or have a raised suspicion of me, I welcome the police, uh leave low stone and churned. They return every stone, that should be approached instead of being accused of being a black cop. And so what kind of attitude is accusing people as black cops, how do a black lawmakers? Well, we actually uh um acting for cover for the rioters, we can see some uh uh more cases being tried in court and convicted. This should keep up with your work, we ask the secretary, well, article twenty three, you claim that the work is ongoing back in O O nine. However, for all this time, you heard that the government had a constitutional duty to enact article twenty three. We claim it's a constitutional duty and yet you're sitting your heads, that mean uh you're not taking seriously. And see that uh for the A twenty three alliance. Have seek a strong uh public mandate, they what you call a social so and. Have seek a strong uh public mandate, it what you call a soc- so and so-called social environment. But as the secretary. And you uh took the two thousand and three uh. Uh 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 night, a bill is the basis to table it uh to let's go. And they are constitutional, besides this C E and cabinet and being um have the prime responsibility. Each lawmaker has swear allegiance to the uh Hong Kong SAR and to uphold the basic law. Thus, we also there are secondary responsibility, whether to up uphold responsibility legislate for article twenty three. Can you give the timetable? For the local legislation for article twenty three, our constitutional duty was reiterated many times. We won't evade from it. And for the legislative exercise. We must discuss it at the legislature and in drafting the law. Thus, the government had said many times it would create a favorable social environment uh for electrical legislation. Will continue to work on it. While this meeting is supposed to end at uh uh one ten. Now have you she winged. Um James Cho and Lok Chong Hong, three minutes. S P O one five. So the police were liaising with overseas as it is vital. Uh check the Morocco and Peru examples, we have a lot of Hong Kong residents stranded there. And also, I received coffee system from the uh travel trade and. And the travelers with uh communicate frequently with this S B. I see they have been dragged on very long. Why are you taking so long? And for, and for departments in. What and when could it be successfully resolved? And S P O four one. And the entry expedition saga, uh you have can be see a lot of icing cases committed by the uh the writers. And you can see that that also the buildings, they have set on fire endangering the residents. So the police is doing his job and the fire have have come too late. Well, maybe it improve later. To sum up all these problems, the government and the S B. Have improved coordination between the police force and the fire service department, so that in case of fire that if. That the fire can input up promptly. I hope can take two questions, since they are very two important questions. As for the corporate assistance for Hong Kong residents overseas, uh we have uh take it very close to our hearts. And like Miss Yu said, we welcome communication and and also uh. Related problems faced by the two groups. And like I said earlier, for dealing with each assistance request. Besides a trying to a practical uh assistive, for example, uh personal supplies and medications. We also deal with a lot of uncertainty and also factors outside our control. And each governments are also facing the same challenges. For example, the local transport situation. And anyone uh willing to provide uh a a public transport or resort. Are they mean to take the people concerned from one place to another, whether there is a curfew in place? And also the local government's cooperation and coordination. And whether the airlines are willing for the Morocco cases. Will we reach out to nine airlines and uh without a common agreement? We also tried other options. For example, some other departments have arranged as attractive flights to pick up their nationals. We hope to tag along as well. And some were considered feasible, however, their flight fell through. Thus, when deal with different requests, we will to uh consider them. And um and as for the uh fire service department. On dealing uh with the right activities on the frontline, the embassy and the police have very close cooperation and on the same page and very often. Including for the uh uh preparation deployment plan as well, uh well, and the um real time support. They have actually complement each other. Next, Mr. Lok Chong Hong. My question is related to uh S P one five. Oh, on the um adding staff by twenty five hundred and forty three. Quit. And the chain is quite concerned about this increased establishment. Of course, uh through political purposes, of course, we hope the police to uphold the law and stop the riots. And some opposition lawmakers, when talking about this supplement, they vote on accounts. Uh and thus, I wonder what I have the courage to jump over the cliff. Does it mean that um the crime rate is like uh. A jumping off a cliff and expected law and order situation to deteriorate? How the public wouldn't see the law and order situation to get any worse? Uh two questions. First, you have an increase of this new post and how would it target the deteriorating law and order? Especially the uh burglary and robbery cases we see in they are rising. And another matter, like the CP has said, some of the uh homegrown terrorism. We found many instances where there is a um ammunition warehouse or an arsenal. Actually, uh was and so um, who do you think associated with this? Well, you don't need to have hundreds around your bullets and so many rifles and also tons of uh raw materials for bombs. So what's your uh uh progress of investigation, well, as much as you can disclose it without revealing any confidential? So do you have any clues that uh that what I say which could people and for what purpose? Uh what can the CP can reveal a little more? First, I I would like to succinctly. Like a prelim response and pass over to the CP. Well, an increase. Of more manpower, the huge majority of those will assign to the police regions for the frontline. As for the investigation and evidence gathering. As for the homegrown terrorism, uh that emerges involving a dozen or so bomb cases, some of these. Uh had mentioned about um uh how to uh push uh threaten the government to change the policy. Which was, which is like the uh foreign cases, whether you will consider adding more manpower for intelligence gathering. While the really power is really for aspect, really for the uh frontline. And also for intelligence gathering and evidence gathering, which included anti-terrorism and um anti-money laundering. Which including uh combating homegrown terrorism. Like the secretary has said, and some of this are usually exclusive, are not really committed to uh general uh. Criminal offenses, who are uh want to uh uh force the government to act or target the public. Next, Mr. James, the last one. Hong Kong uh policy quite polarized, even though uh Michael Ten have joked that they. That a huge majority Hong Kong people are standing on opposing side of the government. I noticed that their past secretaries and commissioners of police. When they come to take questions, it lets go. At least they will show the generosity, because the government is the one with the authority. And. This a political situation. The government will need to take the lead to resolve it, even though you have lost the huge majority of the public trust. My question is simple, a question for the secretary. Since you're a political appointed official. So for your replies provided by you and the commissioner police today, I already discounted. Uh some the uh rude behavior by my colleagues, do you think they would. Enhance the public understanding of the government, to support the government? Or to support uh according to you a stable situation? Or those who are watching now would actually become more enraged. And even of this uh so-called homegrown terrorism, quote unquote. That we let more citizens to sympathize with them or to sympathize with you. So that's my question, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. I absolutely support to have a rational debate here. When the officials make a reply, I see the the uh opposing voice have really um talked. Really um shouted over and drowned out our replies. And a lot of the claims were unsubstantiated and single side that the government have a duty to tell the public, really public the correct information. And we can um discuss in a calm fashion, that would be ideal. Well, the Mr. Cho's attitude just now. Should be uh shared on both sides. I only hope that you could, we can do all one thing to uh object to unlawful acts. From the law enforcement point of view, the political position stands and should not enter the equation, which I would not. Discuss anyway. So I want the whole society to say no to unlawful acts, regardless of their political ideals and philosophies. Should not condone the breaking of the law. The court really had made it clear. That's the second point. Third point. And how the society is going forward? The society would need to uh reach a consensus to govern with lesson. And so as to adopt certain policies. So as to make the public feel that this is going in the right direction. How I agree that we should have a rational discussion. Instead of uh. Before I can finish my thesis, I got interjected by a lot of other voices and my replies drowned out. I think we need to create an atmosphere for a rational discussion. That's the end of today's meeting and thank you for all the public officials and lawmakers coming.